Please, everybody please rise, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pillar, please lead us in a prayer.
Everyone would please bow their head. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the wonderful day that you gave us today, and we pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that business at hand can be pleasing to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, uh, approval of minutes from, reading of minutes from January eighteenth?
Motion to approve this is not reading.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by HAC. Discussion. All favor of approval of those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda, any changes, additions, corrections? Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved, as presented.
Motion by HAC.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, you'll see five A has been removed from there, it'll be the next meeting. Uh, five B is engineers report. Jared cannot be here, but he did set up the attachment. Is there anything, Monty, that we need? There's no action that needs to be taken tonight.
No actions.
So if anybody has any questions or concerns, you can, you know, here's information to contact him, or if you want to go through Monty, that's fine too. Anybody think? Right now, if we have issues, they want to bring up. All right, then let's move down, request of citizens, uh, six A. Irrigation well, Hazel Park and Rack. Pat did, uh, look at that information, and pull up, pull that back up here real quick. So with the service contract, um, Attorney Mr. Donovan did look at it, and so we are okay to move forward with, uh, so this, with, uh, the Hazel Park and Rack drilling well in city limits. So then we, did we make any motions last time, Monty, last meeting? Okay, all right, we're waiting on that's, this is. So, um, I guess with, with the blessing there on the, with the contract, we can move forward then if we want to sell this piece of land, lease it, um, I think it'd be more clean to sell it, I don't know what we'd be looking at for a price, but, um, Pat, you have any recommendations how to go forward with buying that piece, that small piece of land?
Do you have any idea what the value might be?
We could go by square foot for commercial property values, basically. I think the next thing would probably be for the Park District to bring us exactly what they want, whether it's this many feet by this many feet that they need, and then...
Yeah, because we have that ordinance for sale of real property over a certain value.
Yeah.
But if you gift it or enter into an agreement with Park District or do something different, then of course, you could avoid that.
Okay. Monty, would you get ahold of Mr. Frye and let them know that we'd like them to let us know exactly?
They'll meet next Monday, so we'll be able to discuss it then and bring it back to our meeting on the fifteenth.
I just have a question, I guess.
Yes.
Have we already, I guess, recently, um, contacted? Southwest Water, I just double check. Are they okay with this, or?
I have not. Again, if you like.
Suppose doesn't hurt, I suppose, make sure they're okay before we go ahead and...
What would you like them to do?
Contact, he's gonna contact Southwest. Yeah, just contact them, make sure it's okay.
It certainly can.
But what you did was, you just, you read through the documentation and rendered an opinion based upon what they had in writing?
Well, it appears to me from the contract, what they approved that the path was based on, their lost consumption.
Right.
That hasn't been changed, as far as I know, so I don't know what they're based, and the uses are, remain the same. So I don't even know if you have to contact, if you choose to contact them, certainly can, but I think you're avoiding an opportunity from them to challenge you, but that's up to you.
Okay. What do we want? I guess...
I guess to me, if our attorney says it's not gonna be an issue, like he says, why would you invite them to, uh, challenge us on it? You know, basically, all we're doing is selling the property to Parks and Rack, you know, if they put in a well.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. It's their issue with Southwest, not ours, right?
Well, it's actually both because of our contract with Southwest Water. But they did approve the uses, and they knew they were losing at least a million gallons of usage for those purposes, for the three fields that are being irrigated.
Right. I would say if we're doing a new well for a new area, we're watering and we're taking water, why you probably would, you'd probably tell us, what's not, not doable.
Of course, we get the, yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, if they were gonna build a new football field or something, it'd be different.
I, I understand where you're coming from, Casey, I don't think we need to contact him for existing waters that they use now, but, you know. Um, unless we want to make a motion or vote, kind of, I don't... Mr. Frye, we're talking about the well, um, and so, we're gonna just, Parks and Rack to let us know what size of the piece of land you're looking at. If it's two or, two or three of those lots, if it's twenty by twenty to sixty, or whatever it is, so please let us know when you're, when you come back.
Can I, I have a question for Dan.
Yeah.
Have you asked the, the owner of the property if he can sell that property with a piece in there where it says that they have to let you have that well? You get a ninety-nine year lease on it or whatever?
Sure, he could sell it that way, I think he's looking to profit from the land before he sells it.
But that shouldn't deter from a profit, should it? If you, if he's, if so, if I, if I decide to buy it, and he says part of that contract is you have to allow, he's in witness courts to have that, lease it for whatever you guys are paying now, or getting it for free, that that has to be there, and that stays the way it is. And you're not out getting more money than you were before, and he's not losing anything, 'cause really, that's not deterring from the property.
No, I, well, I think for him to do that, then he would have to, in his mind, with increased the sale profit, or the, his asking price by the value that he's not gonna get from owning the land from the well, you know what I mean? He wants, if he owned it for the next twenty-five years, he's gonna get fifteen hundred dollars a year. If he sells it, it doesn't include that thirty-five thousand dollars in the asking price, then he himself will be out that, that profit. So I think he wants to make the thirty-five thousand dollars in the well, and then not deal with it.
I don't think he wants to separate that piece off in any way.
Well, I wouldn't separate it, I would just, like he's doing now, he's leasing it to you for, you're saying fifteen hundred dollars a year?
Correct. When he sells the land, he doesn't, he's no longer getting fifteen hundred dollars a year, unless he increases the sale value, profit, the sale price of his property by that amount. And he would like to reap the benefits of that, the full value of the lease.
But he's selling with the understanding that they can't use that well anymore, then? Right? Or can?
Well, the well's on his property, so whatever price it is.
So then, we're adding another well to our existing community, well then, isn't Southwest gonna have an issue with that?
No, they'll be removing, 'cause the, the well materials, the
Are yours?
Equipment is Parks and Rack's.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Six B, local permit, Hazel Rasslin' Club.
Motion to accept the request for the fifteen fifty raffle grant.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by HAC. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign. Motion passed. Um, Eminem Pet rescue, we reduce hall rent, but there may be kitchen use, possibly?
Correct. They didn't, oh, I'm sorry, they didn't anticipate any kitchen use, but they could...
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, thank you. All right, six D, dogs at large. Go ahead.
It wasn't mine, but I, I guess in my neighborhood, there are some dogs at large that have been reported to our police department. Um, they are causing a problem in our neighborhood, they are, apparently attacked some cats and killed them, or made them in some way, and is, uh, attacking people, and, um, refraining them from leaving their homes. Um, and my understanding is, they have been cited once already?
They were cited once in July, and the judge did, uh, December second of last year. They had no other problems. Then they could keep the dogs, but now consent is passed, I don't know if they don't care, because apparently this weekend.
So were the dogs labeled as vicious as of yet, or are they just being cited for being at large?
I don't think they've cited as, uh, nuisance.
Just a nuisance?
No. I have to check the county, I don't know if they've cited, if they've decided, that's what you want.
Because if I read our, our, and a nuisance is, they frighten, annoy, bark, and chase any person, um, destroy property, not property of the owner, which I hear they have done, they broke into somebody's patio, and destroyed property, and killed some cats, um, at what point are they vicious? I, I, how do... I wanna know what we can do with these dogs, because right now, people are scared to walk in our neighborhood, um, they're not bringing the grandkids over because they don't want them coming from the car to the house, because these dogs are large.
Go through Pat and the judge, and try to get those dogs treated.
And do we know approximately how long that's gonna take? I mean, I don't... I, I don't mean like in ten days, but I mean, like, is it gonna be six months from now? We're still dealing with this, or?
Just like, listen, meters and stuff, we don't witness it, we can't arrest. We can cite, and then the back stair has to be a long form complaint. And that's what we're doing now, because those, as far as I know, those dogs haven't been a problem terror this weekend, that I know about.
Well, they were last, in July.
Yeah, while they were cited, and the judge...
And I heard he's, he's now got a court hearing again, is my understanding, that he was, 'cause that this dog just did it.
Yeah.
He just attacked.
The city attorney gets a paperwork done, signs, serves him, and get a hold of the judge, and see if you have a new number, what he wants to do.
Okay.
Have we had people hurt?
Not people that I know of, um, but, uh, I've talked to neighbors, I went around today, I'm visiting with some of the neighbors, and, um, there's one neighbor building a fence to keep the dogs out.
Yeah.
Um, there are neighbors scared to come out of their homes, because these dogs are out and about, and they chase them back in the...
And we got all of the, uh, video from Hills.
Yep, uh, Hills have a camera.
Yeah, we got cameras, front door, break room, front door, hot tub.
Yeah.
Dog, had a dog house, so, yeah.
And you know, and I understand their concern, because they have like five or six kids.
Not because of the dogs, but because of the dragon.
Yeah.
And he went, and, uh, Cecilia went to jail for ninety days on his dragon, so...
Are you folks here for this topic? There's something you'd like to add?
They attacked me twice.
You've been, you've been injured by them?
No, they didn't get to me, but it was within a couple of feet.
'Cause last year, it was where he got a hold of your cat leg, and...
Didn't know that was, that was, uh...
A different dog? Okay.
Yeah, the other woman's dog.
Okay.
Yeah, came into my yard, yeah, yeah. It jumped out of the car window, came into the yard.
Can you tell us your names, please?
Virginia Pfeiffer.
Yeah.
And I've got copies of the police reports I've made, and incidents that have happened, and they killed two cats in my patio, and I saw the last one, and I've got pictures of what they've torn up.
Yep, you have those pictures.
I think I'm in my house for two days after this last one, because I can't get out without seeing how long he's been, you know? And if I go out my back door, I'm stuck between my house and the neighbor's house, excuse me, and, uh, I would have nowhere to go.
What, what is this that we're looking at?
That's a, a two-inch tote that we, that I made for shelter for cats.
Okay.
And they ripped that apart, and killed the cat.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the first one I think.
That was from back in July.
I mean, I didn't see that one, although I can't say it was those dogs on that one, but I saw what happened to this cat.
And you had one attack this time?
Pardon?
You had just one attack this time?
Yeah.
A cat, okay.
Yeah, at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Sounds like action's been taken that year, you're doing a paperwork to be submitted.
Chief Wolf brought over the paperwork today, and we'll get it in process, get it served.
Mr. Wolf, are these dogs licensed?
This year, no.
Okay.
That I know of, I would have to, like you said, a lot of people come to City Hall, so I'd have to check the county.
Okay.
I was told today that somebody, that they have removed the dogs from Hazel.
Oh.
The people themselves. Whether that's true, I don't know.
I know AJ Statham did say that he was gonna remove one of them, so, we haven't, I haven't had a tag in Golden, anything.
Ma'am in the back row? What, what's your name?
I'm, I'm with the Pet Rescue, and, um, I'm, I'm, um, I'm here for you, here for support. I, I, needless to say, we advocate for animals, but when it comes to the building of people, then it's time to take a different view.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Okay, well, it sounds like we have a process in motion, so it'd be great if they removed those dogs already, but...
It's not the dog's well.
Right. Okay, thank you for being here, appreciate it. Seven A, World Dumpster Race, uh, Monty sent this out, and you saw that? That, we should, I would think we should consider bumping these a little bit, we talked about this in the past, about our government track going out of town, anyhow, the pickings that's going out for the crossroads, um, and you all haven't seen the rates here? Monty, do you want to add to this?
No, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, maybe you can, you can think about it and discuss it a little bit. It came to our attention when we delivered, when there was question about replacing a two-yard dumpster, which is now costing twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, and we just raised the rates on the green cans to twenty-two dollars for rural, just doesn't seem quite equitable.
Units was the twenty-five.
So what you've shown us is, is the current rate.
Correct.
Okay, so what we would need to ascertain is, uh, a, a new rate schedule, if that's what we choose to do.
Right.
Do you know what the percent increase was for those green tubs rural?
From nineteen to twenty-two, so that's three dollars.
That's what I can do, ma'am.
Okay, well, it's not something we need to take action on immediately, obviously. We might as well, while it's fresh, at the next meeting, address this, okay? And then I will, we'll double check and see what, I'll see what rates are with the circle and, and, uh, Waste Management, when they pick up rural. All right, eight A, property purchase, North Star, fourth edition, four lots.
Monty? Was contacted today, inquiring if any of the property between the dog park and the nursery would be available, or the small, there's a small corner just west of where the dog park is, that would have a spot. Basically, this person is looking to purchase a piece of property to, to park the cat around, just for storage, basically. So I wasn't sure if that was something you wanted to start doing or not.
I would like to see us not sell property in that area, just because you have dog park there now, and if there's any other community items that they wanna do, and then, you know, I don't know who put this application in, but, you know, if they park one camper, they'll park seven, and then six of them might be junk, and then what are we gonna do?
I would hate to see it become, uh, that as well.
Yeah, and like I said, I'd like to keep it for, if there's any other community activities that we could do in that area.
Well, I know Dave likes, they like petting grass out there, so...
Like it can put the snow to.
That's right, that is, you're right, but we need to remember that.
Pretty much take, pretty much follow them to that area.
Absolutely.
We hold snow.
If we, if we call it in our designated snow removal area, then we just have to stick to it in the future.
I think there's people that rent spaces for, for this, or any of their communities, so I think that we would, I'd rather not see this become a rental storage area myself. Unless anybody else has a good opinion. All right, so you will contact this person, Monty? We don't need to make a motion on this, do we? I don't think, Pat, you don't recommend we?
No.
Yeah, all right. All right, reports, uh, water sewer.
Nothing to report at this time.
Hey, streets cemetery.
I have nothing to report, unless Dave does, where we had a nice melt day, I guess, if that helps. We have been out, Sandy, and, yeah, I noticed the guys out, but the days we needed it, so other than that, I have nothing else.
My answer, last thing. So it sounds like the, of the, I guess, federal, I guess, the mask mandate applies to, as you're on the bus, so, I guess that starts now. And then, I guess, the library, I did get a, I did get a, I guess, um, a lighting grant, and also, I guess, uh, also, I guess, a used, I guess, the recent, I guess, uh, furnace, I guess, change up. So now, I guess, open library, where things now, um, LED lights now. That's nice. It sounds like, uh, it sounds like at the library now, uh, other traffic is, I guess, starting to come back. You all still like them? Thank you. Police fire.
I had an ambulance board meeting last week, and, um, they're just having issues with finding EMTs, paramedics, um, some are leaving, and so they're looking for more. I'm always looking for volunteers, um, and then the forestry board is meeting tomorrow night, again, and then later on in the agenda, we do have a, a grant acceptance. That would be it.
Okay. Meeting from Jim? Are you sure? All right. Buster, HCD. All right. That moves us down to new business, twelve A, forestry grant award acceptance, so, um, I think Mr. Frye did get a grant, you don't know what it entails?
Uh, it's an eighty-eight hundred dollar grant, um, that he is going to be using for the nursery, that he, and wants to get some more trees, and, um, some other equipment that he's been looking at, and, um, the one thing he told me today was that he is shopping locally for spending a lot of that grant money with, um, some of businesses in town, so, and then looking at buying some hazelnut trees, and apparently, they're hard to get. Where they, where does he say they grow them?
He's gonna go over to eastern part of the state somewhere to pick them up, they don't even deliver.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
He's gonna try and coordinate it with a trip he's making out east, and just pick them up this way.
Yeah.
Galen, Silas?
He's getting his order ready, I mean, Galen's getting his trees ready now for us this, for the spring, but these he doesn't provide, so...
So, so the grant just covers trees and, and equipment, or?
Yeah.
I see guys are cutting, they're cutting some trees down, removing some.
That probably gets a load of all, of this weather. Why there's some big trees marked too.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but...
Yeah, what you do.
And I do think we need a motion on this, um,
Yeah, except, except for...
Yeah, so I will still move to...
Motion by Wolf to accept, uh, this grant.
Second.
Second by HAC, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
HAC.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. All right, um, twelve B, two thousand twenty-two transit grant.
Yeah, we're already, I've already submitted paperwork for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two transit grant, told you the numbers, I don't remember them off the top of my head, two hundred and some thousand for administrative and twelve thousand, or two hundred and some thousand for operating and twelve thousand for administrative. Uh, need to submit new certifications and assurances, Attorney Donovan has reviewed and completed his portion, so I just need your approval, so we can submit these, they are required before any awards can be made. So move.
Motion by?
With Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion.
That pretty much covered the, the budget then, for, for that area?
It's still an eighty-twenty grant, but so long as the pandemic is still going on and there's emergency orders, it is actually still a thousand percent, obviously.
Yeah, it would cover that.
Good. No motion and a second, and we'll call.
Pillar, aye. Stern?
Aye.
HAC?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried. Uh, one thing I did forget to mention in the reports, I did, I wanted to have a question about the house we're taking down, uh, so Monty, we are having asbestos abatement.
Contacting materials testing, it sounds like they're gonna be down here Thursday to do the abatement, uh, he figured it would be less than a thousand dollars, similar to what we did on that other property that we got, so, figured there'd be fourteen samples, and, once he has a report, I thought we would probably submit some of that information to the people that we were getting estimates from, because if they have to handle materials different, they may have a different estimate for the, you know, which.
Okay. So Dave, you guys, you've taken down some trees, you're ready to go? So Dave, you guys have taken out some trees, you're ready to go, very much? And what, there's a water issue there, what happened with that?
Had water coming out of the ground, but can't figure where it's coming from, and it quit.
This is not our group stop?
No. Could be just from the freeze thaw cycle, if there was some moisture trapped in the ground, that it got underneath and wasn't oil.
Was it oil?
Wasn't oil.
Always looking for certain...
We're, we're keeping an eye on, on the mon, monitor, to see if something's...
Um, thirteen, approval bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Okay, all in favor of this thing, bill, say aye.
Aye.
That's right, by whatever, king's staff, roll call, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Pillar.
Olenor.
Aye, first meeting, all right. Motion approved, bills are gonna be paid. All right, meeting adjourned, thanks for being here, guys.